Good morning. Paul to order the meeting, public meeting today, April 25th, 2017, and Arapahoe County Board of County Commissioners. And to my left is Ron Caroll County Attorney. To my right is Ms. Jillian Sanchez. This is the President of the Board. He's on his way to the table, please.
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Conti?
Good morning.
Commissioner Baker is absent and excused. Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson, in the platitude place. Please, John. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carl, are there any changes to the agenda today?
There are no modifications to the agenda.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Conti, seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Let's see here. Approval of the minutes for April 4th, 2017. We had a full board. A motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Second?
Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Conti. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now is our time for citizen comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak during public comment on anything that isn't on the agenda this morning?
Diana Mays, B O C C Administration Manager, reading into the record for Citizen J.M. Fay, who resides at 2575 South Syracuse Way, Denver, Colorado, 80231, and that is unincorporated. Senate Bill 71, that Senator Tate worked his butt off on and which there were SOS meetings on, just died due to the Democrats. This was the bill to change how vote centers worked so that the money spent on them could be used when the voters were actually there, which is at the last minute. House Bill 1242 is in Senate Finance this afternoon at 2:00 P. M. and from the articles we have read, listened to, it's expected to die because Senator Tate, Neville, and Hill do not like it. We don't blame them, as it still needs work, as we doubt in the present form it passes the voters either. Commissioners, you have on the consent calendar the appointment of two people to the Arapahoe Library District Board. We would ask that, that we moved off and you actually debate these people because there was no vetting by you on these people. We are also not aware, and we have been checking, you even have the mandatory meeting you're required to have with them under state law. Furthermore, the porn and the multitude of other issues associated with this library district has not been dealt with by you, and again, you appoint this board. You are not going to sweep this under the rug either when you have someone bringing this to your attention on a routine basis. Let's see. Lastly, if you can deal with the mess from the Coens, which you did create, and for which they do have the paperwork to prove it, we would ask why you are refusing to deal with the mess that you created for us almost 21 full years ago. You did the right thing for them, and you need to do the right thing for us. You also added to the issue when you failed to fix the situation when it was first brought to your attention, as well as the attention of Cunningham Fire in 2008, and when you and Cunningham then decided to escalate it with Cherry Creek Water, then coming in later on to add to our problems. You need to deal with this, and you need to mediate the situation with the Cunningham, Cherry Creek, and one nasty HOA. As we tell the state when they too do not want to deal with issues, your citizens are not going away. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Is there anyone else who would like to testify during public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment, and I'll entertain a motion for the consent, approval of the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have one public hearing today. It's Welch subdivision filing 12 replat, P. 16-023. And our attorney on this matter is Mr. Robert Hill, Senior Assistant County Attorney, and our presenter is Molly Orkell Larson, Senior Planner, Public Works and Development. Mr. Hill, will you set the foundation, please?
Yes, thank you. This replat has been noticed by publication, mail, and posting in accordance with statute and the Land Development Code. The Board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Ms. Orkell Larson?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Molly Orkell Larson, Senior Planner with the Public Works Department. What's before you this morning is the Welch subdivision filing number 12 replat. The applicant presently has a 1.32 acre lot in the Welch subdivision on which his existing residence resides. The applicant proposes to subdivide this lot into two. One lot will be .7 acres and the other .53 acres in size. The larger of these lots will contain the existing residence, and the second lot will be developed with another single-family residence. Both lots that are proposed meet the R2 residential zoning requirements. Staff did receive a phone call from a neighbor northeast of the subject lot with concerns of additional drainage entering his property due to the development of the, he has concerns about the additional drainage on the proposed lot that's to be developed with the second residence. From discussions with other county staff, the drainage of the subject lots both drain towards the street and away from the concerned neighbor. I do have the county engineering staff here to answer any questions along with the applicant's engineer on this project, so if you have any questions regarding that matter, you can ask them. Based on the findings of the staff report, staff is recommending conditions with approval. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. So, the issue that has been really of any substance at all about this is the drainage. So I'm wondering if you could, yourself or have someone come up and explain what that issue is and how it has been resolved, because the thinking is that there may be a problem having to do with the heights of the various lots and so on. So if you could kind of walk us through that, just take a few minutes, walk us through what the situation is and how it is or isn't a problem, or how it has been solved, then I think that would put, that would be very helpful. Get that on record.
I'm going to have our engineering staff address this. They were involved with reviewing that, that, the drainage patterns. All right. I'm going to turn it over to our engineering staff. Can we zoom in a little longer? There we go.
Not seeing that very soon.
That's a little bit better.
So, good morning, Board. Chuck Haskins, Engineering Services Division Manager. Yeah, we became aware of some complaints from the residents in Yorkshire Estates immediately north of the subject property. And so we looked at the existing drainage analysis that we had, the report that the applicant's engineer prepared, as well as we sent Simswa out to do an investigation. And as Molly said, and here is the subject property right here, and these are drainage basin delineation lines. And so for the most part, the addition of a residence on the property is going to drain to the southeast. There is some natural drainage on the north side of the site that does go towards Yorkshire Estates as well as, oh yeah. So here's the, here's the subject lot here, and this subdivision is going to occur here, so there'll be a new, an existing residence on this side and a new residence on the east side of the lot. They generally drain to the west or southwest. This is the county's park here. And those drainage flows were accounted for within the drainage analysis for the county park. But there are, there is some power lines and some mostly pervious area here, a landscaping dirt area that does drain towards the residence. Here's 9056 and 9046 where we heard some concern. So the, there is a large lot over here. The address is 1871 South Parker Road, that apparently has some kind of irrigation system that may be contributing flows to those lots. The other thing Simswa noted is that the lots are, the lots in Yorkshire Estates are very encumbered by improvements, and there's not a lot of side lot conveyance to allow that drainage from the south to be conveyed through its natural flow path towards the north. So this, the improvements here will drain into Parker, Mexico, Outfall 6, and this is in Parker, Mexico, Outfall 5. So don't anticipate any additional runoff from, from this subdivision.
Mr. Jackson?
So, so these houses that are concerned may be experiencing some difficulties, but it's from other things and not from whatever may happen with this particular subdivision?
Yeah, and we can reach out to those, to those residents. And again, I think what's happening is usually when you improve your lot, you like to leave some conveyance on the sides so natural drainage flows can be conveyed. And I think they've kind of encroached in there with improvements, landscaping, and we could meet with them, maybe make some suggestions on how to improve that, or maybe even look to the property owner at 871 South Parker Road, see what they can do to maybe contribute less to the problem. But it does, it is not coming from any, anything but maybe a little bit of area, this open space area on the north side of the lot, which would really drain this way, and these two properties are here and here. So don't anticipate any problems.
Okay. It's a complicated system, and the water flows where it will flow.
Yeah, the water generally, so this is the, there's a base, there's, the four-square-mile area is separated by sub-basins, and this sub-basin all drains to Parker, Mexico 6 and out towards Cherry Creek. This drains northwest to Parker, Mexico 5, and then out to Cherry Creek. So, but I don't doubt that they're having, experiencing some problems, but it is not from this property, in our opinion. The applicant does have his engineer here too, if you had any questions for him.
But, but I like what you said about reaching out to those homeowners and saying, "Well, you know, we looked into it, here's what we found, and perhaps we can help with some, some remedy."
Yeah, and I don't know if they're in attendance today, but we'd be happy to meet with them after the hearing or reach out separately and see if we can address their questions and maybe give them some suggestions on making, improving the conveyance.
Excellent. Thank you. I have no more questions. Thank you. Commissioner Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Haskins, thank you for being here today. My question is, has anything been done in the area to manipulate drainage? Any kind of culverts added, any kind of, you know, French drain systems? Or is this just all the natural lay of the land and how it's, or has anyone manipulated dirt to, in order to cause drainage in any particular direction?
The, I think it's mostly a ridgeline area, so again, it is more of the natural topography of the land. The county has invested significant storm drainage infrastructure in the four-square-mile area. The problem was development occurs, there was no conveyance pipes to get the drainage to Cherry Creek, which is a mile away. So the county and urban drainage and Simswa have worked over the last 30 years on improving the conveyance and the collector system to get drainage to Cherry Creek. But I'm not aware of any French drain systems or anything like that.
Thank you, Mr. Haskins.
Thank you.
Would you like to have the applicant come up? Good morning, and if you'd just state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning. My name is Mike Welch, and my address is 9119 East Jewel Circle. And this is Kevin Archer, my engineer.
Thank you. Mr. Archer, if you'd just state your address for the record?
Yeah, Kevin Archer with Dave Archer and Associates, 105 Wilcox in Casper, Colorado.
Thank you. Are there any further questions about the drainage or about the project in general? Commissioner Jackson?
I'd just like to hear if you have a presentation for us or any kind of background that you would like to give to us. I think my questions have been answered unless you have some additional information around that.
We have a visual here that we could put up on the screen and show you. We've prepared a drawing that shows that the new residence that I'm going to construct for myself on this lot that we're going to try to split, drains out to the south to the conveyance that Simswa on the county put in there for this purpose, so we're not going to create any more drainage at all back to the north. That shows the proposed residence and my existing residence, and you can see from the arrows that the water is going to flow all the way out to the Jewel Circle conveyance that goes down into the storm sewer that he was addressing earlier that goes to Cherry Creek Outfall.
Commissioner Jackson?
Just for orientation, Parker Road is where and the park is where?
The park is over on this side. This basin line here, everything from this line flows to the south and then to the north. So we're not changing anything on that portion of the lot that drains to the north. This drawing was put together early, early on, and the house has changed, and this part of the house is no longer being constructed, so everything is going to, everything is going to flow to the south in the area of the proposed
Any other questions? The applicant? Okay. I will, thank you. I will open the public hearing, and is there anyone who would like to come up and testify? Welcome. Come on up. And if you'd just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Paula Bobo. I'm a resident at 9056 East Colorado Circle. I may know some of you from my days in Glendale, in case my face looks familiar. But I am actually directly behind this proposed property, so my backyard backs up to this lot. And my husband and I have lived there since, well, we bought the property in 2014, and since then, we have spent thousands of dollars trying to repair all of the drainage issues that have been on our property for years. Essentially, we have a French drain on our property to try and deal with all of the water that has been coming down from the properties that are already above us, not including this lot that would house another two additional units. We've had several engineers come out, and right now, there's, even though we spent several thousand dollars on this last French drain that we put in, it's not solving the issue. We've had irrigation experts come out, and basically between my property, which is at 9056, and my neighbor's property, which is at 9046, we have a swamp. Even with our sprinkler systems turned off, which we've had our different sprinkler guys come in and actually turn certain valves off right where this drainage issue is happening, as soon as we get into the more summer months where people start using water a little bit more, you can walk and pretty much your shoes will just get soaked. So we're very concerned about this. We appreciate the drainage reports that have come from the county and that have come from the applicant, but at this time, we do respectfully ask that you continue this for our neighborhood, especially our property and our neighbors, 9046 as well as 9036, to be able to engage our own drainage experts to make sure that we're not going to incur more damages. Because at this point, if we have to spend more money on these drainage issues, it's only going to become worse in our position.
Can we put that map up again and just make sure that we know where your property is?
I don't know how to do that. Yep. I'm 9056, so I'm, yeah, I can't.
And the, and the property that's going to be subdivided and sweared along is in red?
It's to the...
Oh, no, yeah, it is red.
Okay.
This might be a better one here. There's a lot of...
Is that one with the red?
But that's, yeah, this is actually, this is my property right here. And if you can see where I'm pointing, I mean, it's hard to see, but this line right here is almost exactly where we have the French drain, and it's pretty much exactly where we have the swamp issue. Although we've only owned the house for a few years, we have spoken with the owner that has owned his property at 9046 for almost 30 years, and he said that this drainage issue did not exist until the houses were built above us.
So when you mean above us to the...
I guess, well, because I'm downhill from them, so even though I'm...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, even though I'm north, I'm downhill. Yeah, sorry.
I'm, yeah, north-south and...
My backyard goes down in steps, so in fact, we actually had retaining walls built. We, when we purchased the property, there were already existing retaining walls that were made out of wood that were falling over, so we spent about $15,000 actually building proper retaining walls because our gardens go down in levels, and our engineers put in the proper piping. We built them in stone. I mean, we've pretty much tried everything. In fact, we had to remove most of the grass in our backyard and put down turf because we just had a mud pit at the end of the day. So it's a big problem for us, and it does directly impact my property. So I want to thank you for your time today. If there's any other questions, I can answer.
Just clarifying?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. When you talk about a swamp in the backyard, are you, are you meaning like visible standing water?
Visible standing water.
Okay.
And actually, what, we've, we've managed to mitigate a little bit of the problem in our, in our backyard because we have a fenced-in backyard, but on that property line that I was showing you, we don't have fencing in the front of our yards at Yorkshire. Everything's open in your front yards. We have about a third of an acre. So from the point where our neighbor's fence is, his backyard fence, to mine, all the way to the street, it's standing water. And then you can actually see, and I apologize, I don't have photographs for you, I'm not well-prepared today, but you can actually see on the sidewalk that the sidewalk is discolored from all of the water that just keeps draining that way.
Commissioner Jackson?
So you asked for a continuance so that you could get your own drainage expert. Have you not, you said you've had engineers and others, but you've not had a drainage expert to look at this before this time?
No, ma'am. We have not had an official drainage report in terms of what putting two more units, you know, essentially to the south of us, but what I consider above us, how that would affect our properties below. So that's why we're asking for that.
But the folks that did look at your property and did an analysis of the swamp, drain the swamp, familiar phrase. Anyway, what did they say was causing it?
They still contend, and I, my neighbor isn't here to tell you what his people had said before, because he never put in a French drain. We were the ones that put it in, but he said that it has been caused by the units that were constructed to the south of us, which is still up the hill for months.
But that was his opinion and...
That was his opinion, and he's not an official drainage expert. And so we would like to just respectfully bring in our own. We're willing to work with the applicant on a timeline, but we would like to have our own report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Lampert, 9022 East Colorado Drive. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of two organizations. First, Four Square Mile, which is very quick. Four Square Mile took a look at this, and from the standpoint of Huntington Welch, which is the adjacent to the south of this parcel, including Jewel Circle and Huntington, which is the larger association to the south of that, that they saw no opposition from that standpoint. So hence, Four Square Mile has reservations only on the drainage, as you've already heard. Now, moving on to representing Yorkshire Estates. As representing Yorkshire Estates, there are three homeowners that are deeply affected by this parcel. And as you saw, the drainage basin, as the natural drainage that we have right now, is draining in the way that it's going to the three property owners. So what we had always thought is that any new development is responsible for taking care of drainage. We know that the drainage basin, as you've heard from Chuck, is that the drainage basin goes one way and the other drainage basin goes the other way. The problem is, the drainage basin that goes towards Yorkshire is not being addressed at all. You saw the parcel being developed with all of that land going towards Jewel Circle. And so hence, from that standpoint, the proposed development is being taken care of itself. However, what is not being addressed is the parcel that would be to the north edge of that property adjacent to the three homeowners in Yorkshire Estates. So we would like to see, and I've talked to Mr. Welch, and I believe that he is conducive to sit down and work something out, because not only do we have the drainage, but we also have some landscape issues that are growing through the fences over at Yorkshire on those three homeowners. So representing those three homeowners from Yorkshire right now, we're asking for more discussion from the standpoint of making sure that parcel, not where it's being constructed, but the parcel that's being left alone, has to have that drainage addressed, because the natural drainage is towards these properties right now.
Thank you, Mr. Lampert. I think we'll bring our, Mr. Haskins, back up to, to talk, address any drainage issues. Is there anyone else who would like to testify?
I was, Madam Chair, I was just going to ask if, if people could be so kind, as when they're referring to the different streets and lots and so forth, if they could use the pointer to, to direct us to what specifically they're talking about for greater clarity, that would be very helpful.
Great, thank you. Mr. Haskins? Is there anyone else before I close the public hearing?
Diana Mays, reading into the record for Citizen J.M. Fay. We are just asking that the location of this be verified to make sure the side of the street with the small lots is the same side of the street that this proposed lot splitting is also going to be. There is a longstanding policy that one side of Ywinta Way has small lots, about one-half acre each, and the other side all has large lots. This is how the neighbors want it, and this is going, is going on for decades. We need to keep the peace here because this is one hot topic with Mountain View Garden Residence, which is not going to go away until all the neighbors die or move away and this stops being a hot topic with them. The drainage, by the way, is going on for a long time and not been dealt with. You have to wonder why, if this is an issue for this long, why this is coming up now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask when Ms. And I'm going to ask, when Mr. Haskins comes up, to point out to some of the streets that were referred to, Commissioner Conti, because I think that would be really helpful. So the streets and the property. Is there anyone else who would testify, would like to testify during public comment? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Haskins, can you help us with orientation with some of the streets that were referenced and...
So, yes, I can.
If this is the best...
The Parker Road is over here, and Jewel Circle comes, intersects with Parker Road here. The property being platted today, and this is the county's park here, the property being platted today is right here. This is Colorado Circle, which is where Ms. Bobo, I believe, Bobo spoke of, and her residence is here, and her neighbor that has the concerns residence is here. I think a little bit of, some of the, the ponding water issue almost sounds like that may be some irrigation issues on these upstream properties, predominantly this 1871, which is a large lot subdivision. In my earlier presentation, Sims, I referred to, Simswa had noted there was some irrigation there, and that could be compounding the problem. So again, we're happy to look at that. I did, I, there is only one additional residence here, not two. There is an existing residence on the property, and the applicant is creating an additional lot to put a residence to the east of there. So, so hopefully that orients the board a little bit. It does sound like there's an issue. We don't believe that it's coming from this property, but it's up to the board how you would like us to proceed. And we're, either way, we're happy to, to meet with the resident and we can bring in Simswa and, and maybe we need to talk to the property owner here and maybe look at what's going on there, because that may be the biggest source of the issue is some irrigation from that lot.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, so if, if, and I will check with Mr. Welch before we make any decisions or anything, but if the, the affected or the Ms. Bogo were to hire a drainage expert, how long would that take to get some kind of analysis?
Oh, I don't know. Depends how quickly she acts, probably, you know, a couple, they'd have to go out and do an investigation, maybe do some survey shots, review some of the information that we've presented to the board.
Right.
They could probably do it in a couple of weeks if they moved quickly. I, I don't know that that's necessary, but we'd, we'd be happy to, to take a look at it, you know, and if she doesn't agree with our findings, she's happy to hire an independent consultant to review that. But I think they're going to find the same thing we have, is that no one's doubting that there's an issue. It's the source of that issue, and how can we address that? By working with the property owner, this is a lot owned by John Warford, if you're familiar with Mr. Warford, the manager of Cherry Creek Valley Water and Sewer, we'd be happy to reach out to John and see if he could shed any light on, on that and maybe do something to alter some of that.
I'm concerned that, that we've waited for these studies and, and investigations until something like this has come up. If this has been an issue for 20 years or more, it's concerning to me that, that this is what brings this to the fore. So I'm wondering what the best way of resolving this issue so that, so that Mr. Welch can proceed, so that Ms. Bogo and her neighbors can get the relief from the flooding that they need, and, you know, I like, I like resolution to these issues. And I, and I think this is a case where there, there isn't a right or a wrong, but, but there are issues that need to be addressed. So I'm wondering if, I don't know if I can do this, but to ask Mr. Welch and Ms. Bogo and maybe Mark, if you're part of this, I don't know, but to figure out a way to proceed expediently to get to resolution so that, so that people get what they need. And I don't know how we're going to do that, if we need to delay for a week or two, a couple of weeks, so that these things can be resolved, or if we can put a condition in the approval or how to proceed with this. So I'm open to suggestions.
I think we have a question. Commissioner Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering, Mr. Haskins, do you believe that, or is it the, the staff's belief that the further development of these in-question lots could assist in that greater, you know, grass could be grown that might help to absorb some of this water that's, that's coming in, the other vegetation that might help? Or is this coming from a different direction so that this, the further developments really would not be of any assistance whatsoever?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, for the most part, runoff comes from impervious coverage, hard coverage, concrete, asphalt roofs, things like that. The rear of this lot is what we call pervious. It's not improved landscaping, and it is a Piesgo easement, I believe, or Excel Energy easement. There's some high-powered overhead power lines that run through here. And so it's coming, I think some of it's coming from that area that Piesgo or Excel actually manages. So I don't know what type of landscaping they would be comfortable with under their power lines. Generally, they're left in a pretty undisturbed state. But that, that is something we, we could certainly explore. And to address Commissioner Jackson's issue, we commit to explore that issue, whether you want to, you know, postpone the, your, your approval or, or approve it with conditions. Staff, staff will follow up with this with the, the property owner.
Mr. Welch, would you mind coming up and just stating your...
If I could, Mr. Haskins, I have one question.
Okay.
And then, or Mr. Welch, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. On the existing lot, does it have, where the, the home is currently, does it have adequate drainage?
I believe so. You know, there's not a lot of improvements on, that are required on a single-family lot, on a larger lots, in a larger lot subdivision. We don't usually utilize detention facilities or piping system. We usually allow it to drain to an existing system. And so I, I believe so, but I, I have not, I don't have any longstanding history on that lot, but I believe it, it's functioning just fine today. Again, it drains to our park, which was analyzed when we did the drainage study for our park. So I, I don't believe there's any problems there now. Applicant, I think, has been on the property for a long time. He may have some further insights into that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Welch.
So I'm just wondering if you would be willing to work with the neighbors a little bit and further explore another, it sounds like we've had several drainage studies, the county's done one, you, you've done one. Neighbors are not quite satisfied with that. Would you be willing to work a little bit further and put this off for a couple of weeks and then come back and we, would we hear this?
Well, this is my own house, and I've been trying to get it started for a long time, and I'd like to get this resolved. I'd just like to say, there's a 75-foot power easement behind, behind my existing residence, which is here. Here, you can use this, just push that green button. Oh, there you go. This whole back area here on my property is a 75-foot power easement, and we have grass, native grass growing in there that we mow, so it's completely vegetated with grass, and we don't irrigate anything here at all. There's no water put on this at all. So I, I don't believe, I mean, we've, I've lived there all my life, and my parents' original house where I grew up is right here. We've had the property since 1946, and there's, there's no way, I believe, that because of the, the vegetation that's there, the grass, we have a lilac hedge right here that any of our water is coming down on. My guess is this is caused by irrigation and improper drainage. I mean, I don't know the elevation of this back corner of this lot and what the elevation is out on the street out here, but if there's an issue right here, it's probably the grading and the improvements. But, you know, I don't want to cause a problem with anybody. I mean, we didn't do this to, to create a range war, and I wasn't aware of any of these issues until I walked in here today. So I'm sort of blindsided, and, you know, I, I just don't feel like we are contributing to any of this water.
Mr. Jackson.
So you never noticed water, even though, I, I get it, you've got the lilac hedge, but behind that, you've not noticed that in the, in the, right of way, you've not noticed it being overly wet or...
No, this is all just grass, and it's fairly level, and there is a substantial drop-down across the back here from Bedford, I mean, from their subdivision, I'm sorry.
And I could see why they would assume that that drop-off meant that the water was coming from your site. I mean, that's just, we learned that water goes downhill, so...
Sure. And I don't know if the water could be draining from John's property over here and going around, but, you know, we've always had grass back there. We, you know, we maintain it by cutting it short sometimes, but there's absolutely no irrigation back here where we'd be putting any water.
And when you cut it, you don't notice that what you cut is wet?
No. I mean, if it rains, this is all really...
I don't mean when it rains, of course it is, but, I mean, you know, it doesn't generally...
Puddle, it doesn't puddle. This is all really sandy soil in here we grew up. The original name of this street before the county changed it was Sandy Circle, because this whole area is just pure sand. And, you know, when we water our lawn, you can only water it for about five minutes, and, and the, the water is all soaked into the ground, so...
Okay, thank you. I, it seems to me that we've got two issues going. I, I don't, I don't hear that the development of this property is, and the existing property, based on the studies, will impact the neighbors to the north. But I do think, as Mr. Haskins said, there is a problem. And so it, it seems to me that we, we need to absolutely have a lot more investigation and do more work with the property owner to the east and figure out where the issue is. There's clearly a problem. I think we have to be absolutely satisfied that, that the new home is going to drain. It sounds like that it was reduced in size, at least on the north side, so that there won't be any drainage, or there won't be any impervious area to the north, and that it should flow to the south. And I, I think that's important from the, to give confidence to the, the residents to the north, that these new properties are not going to exacerbate the problem, but there is a problem. And I think, I mean, I, I don't know, we, we could delay it, but it, it seems like that, or put a condition, but I'm not feeling like this, this new home is, is going to, there's a problem today. And I, I don't know that the new home is going to make any change to that.
Yeah, it's, you know, we, we are not drainage experts, but clearly, as you say, there's a problem today, and our experts are telling us that this will not exacerbate the problem. However, we need to find a way to help you solve your problem. So I think that's a separate deal. And so I think if we can, I, I think we can say that the county would, and Mr. Haskins has said that he would be happy to work with the homeowners, excuse me, and HOA, and Mr. Warford, and anybody else who's included, to figure this out, because this is a problem that's been going on for a long time and has not been fully addressed and is only going to make more problems. So I think if we, we can't like just ignore it, we need to do something about it, and we should begin that work today. I think that, however, Mr. Warford's project can go on in concert with this...
Mr. Welch.
Sorry, Mr. Welch's, project can go on at the same time, and if, if for some unforeseen, unstudied reason, his project would affect this drainage, then that would be part of the study that was being done about the drainage in the, in the area. So whatever remedies are, are decided upon, then those remedies should be undertaken. And it would, I think, cover both issues. Did, did that make sense, I hope?
Mr. Jackson, would you like to make a motion?
I will.
And then also give direction? We could also give direction to staff. So we're, we're sort of not totally separating the issues, but obviously, on the, on the Welch property, there has to be drainage and be confident that drainage is not going to make the problem to the north worse, but, so that Mr. Welch could move ahead with his project, but at the same time, the direction could be, as you said, to work with all of the properties in that area to figure out what the problem is and offer solutions to what that is.
Mr. Haskins has a note.
Our, our normal process is prior to a certificate of occupancy, that a grading certificate, or certification is provided by the property owner's engineer. So there'll, there'll be those assurances that it is draining to the south before we'll let somebody occupy that building. And, and we'll monitor the grading throughout the process. So I, I do think there is, there is a, you know, an evaluation at the end to assure that it didn't get graded the wrong way. Just wanted to make the board aware of that.
It, it seems like that along the way, rather than for, for Mr. Welch, in fairness to him, that that be, there may be more visits to the site than might normally be made. I, I would hate to come in at the end and say...
Absolutely, I, I agree. There's, there's going to be a guest report required, a grading, erosion and sedimentation control plan, and, and their design is to take the drainage to the southwest. And, but just saying at the end, there'll be an engineer that certifies that it was graded pursuant to Mr., their engineer's report, so...
Right. Commissioner Conti, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say that water is too valuable in this state to have it in areas where it's causing a problem. And so I do believe that proper drainage in this area... And so I do believe that proper drainage in this area, so that water can be of its best and most beneficial use, would be in order. And if it takes us an additional 30 days to figure out how we can, A, solve your problem, and make sure that we're using it for its best and highest use, I think that that would be proper.
Okay. So you're advocating for a delay, a continuance, or... Okay. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. I would like to move, in the case of P-16-026, Welsh subdivision filing number 12 replat, the county commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public comment as presented at the public hearing. I hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the signature of the final Mylar copy of the replat, the applicant agrees to address the Rappahoe County Public Works and Development Department comments and concerns as outlined in their reports. They are to comply with the requirements of the Cunningham Fire Protection District, and third, the applicant will pay a total amount of cash in lieu of $1,546 to be distributed as follows, prior to the recording of the plat. School, $806, public park, $710.40, and other public purposes, $29.60. I would also like to add, at this point, that we give direction to staff to work with the neighborhood in really doing a drainage study, and figuring out where this flooding is coming from, and to recommend what improvements might be used by those residents. And I would like staff to come back to the board at some kind of drop-in, or study session, or whatever is appropriate, to let us know that this has been done. And I ask for a second.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Conti. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oops, I'm sorry, Commissioner Conti.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, if it's possible to go ahead and move forward with the subdivide, and allow the staff to also work with the existing homeowners, I'm happy for that to work in concert together, simultaneously. You know, if we can walk and chew gum at the same time, that'd be great. I just want to make sure that the drainage concerns are taken care of. I have been that homeowner at the bottom of the hill, and had all properties draining into my lawn. I know the drainage problems that it can cause, and I know that it's, you know, you want the ability to enjoy your property, and to use it to its full benefit. And I think it's very important that we work with the area, and make sure that water is draining in, as I said before, to its highest and most beneficial use. So if that can happen jointly, you know, while the subdivision is happening, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Conti. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously, and I would like to, I think your suggestion, Commissioner Jackson, about making sure, and we'll ask that you all, that we look for a date here, and I don't know what a reasonable period of time would be, but a month, six weeks, something like that, to come back to our board in a, it'd probably be study session, because we can have more time to talk about what the findings were, and what the solutions can be. And so we'll set that time, and make sure that neighbors and the neighborhood is aware of that meeting, so you can come and, you know, talk as well, or get your, make sure your input is known by our board, too. So we look forward to that, and thank you very much for being here, and we're gonna try our best to make sure we get this. You know, I think it is, we've seen it often, that when development happens in an area, either the water table rises, or a development next to it doesn't have proper drainage, and then somebody's gonna be impacted by that. So we're gonna try to figure out how we solve it. So thank you very much, and for being here today, everyone. Okay. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. I wanted to commemorate, yesterday was Holocaust Remembrance Day, and so in order to commemorate that, I have a couple of quotations that I'd like to read, from folks who can say things much more eloquently than I can. Unfortunately, in this day and age, these quotations are as relevant as they were at any time in history. So I'm just gonna read a couple. From Eli Wiesel, "I swore never to be silent whenever and wherever human beings endure suffering and humiliation. We must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented." From Shimon Perez, "Six million of our people lived on in our hearts. We are their eyes that remember. We are their voice that cries out. Their dreadful scenes flow from their dead eyes to our open ones, and those scenes will be remembered exactly as they happened." Another one, from Yehuda Bauer, a scholar of the Holocaust. "Thou shalt not be a victim, thou shalt not be a perpetrator, but above all, thou shalt not be a bystander." From Primo Levi, "We must be listened to, above and beyond our personal experience. We have collectively witnessed a fundamental unexpected event, fundamental precisely because unexpected, not foreseen by anyone. It happened, therefore it can happen again." This is the core of what we have to say. It can happen, and it can happen everywhere." Another one from Eli Wiesel, "The duty of the survivor is to bear testimony to what happened. You have to warn people that these things can happen, that evil can be unleashed. Race hatred, violence, idolatries, they still flourish." And lastly, from Anne Frank, "It's a wonder I haven't abandoned all my ideals. They seemed so absurd and impractical. Yet I cling to them because I still believe, in spite of everything, that people are truly good at heart." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. That's very nice. Really appreciate it. And I do want to call attention, when you leave here today, that you'll see out on our, on our front, in the front of the building, that it is also Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we have some, we like to draw attention to that, too, and there's a lot of work being done in Arapahoe County to protect children and the elderly, and we work very hard as a board to make sure that those kinds of things that impact children today and in the future do not happen. So you'll notice that when you go out, and thanks again. Any other comments? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.